Good afternoon. Thank all of you for being here today. Today is July 6th. It's approximately, we're running just a little behind 6:05. We're gonna go ahead and officially call this meeting to order tonight. I'm gonna ask if Commissioner, well, he's eating, so I'm gonna... Commissioner Mason, if you would lead us in our invocation tonight. And Commissioner Henderson, if you would lead us in our prayers tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let us all bow our heads. You have any further, we thank you for bringing us back to this place one more time. We thank you for all that you've done for our community and all that you are going to do. We ask that as we move forward in doing the SPOS business of our community, that we are able to come together, work together, and bring about the things that are gonna really help elevate and take our community to the next level. Give us the wisdom, the knowledge, and the understanding on how to make the best decisions for our community, where we will all benefit from the decisions that are made. We thank you in advance. We appreciate you. Because you said it, we believe in. That settles it. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Again, thank you so much for being here this afternoon. We're here for our special call meeting tonight. We're here for our special call meeting tonight, our SPOS meeting. I'm gonna now turn it over to, well, I guess we need to get a motion to adopt the agenda. I seek a motion, please. Can I get a second? Thank you. There's a motion by Commissioner Mason and a second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Pass is 5-0. Thank you, ma'am. Next, we're gonna turn it over to Mr. Sims. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So again, we're passing out commissioners. It's a copy of what we provided last time, and that is a draft document of the 2023 proposed SPOS projects. Tonight, we also have the Vice Chair, Jeff Terrell, that's here to present the findings from the SPOS committee. And we would like for him just to talk about what was involved with the SPOS committee on how they came up with the projects.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
First of all, our chairperson, Mr. Baxter Burchilden, could not make it this evening. So he asked me what I fill in tonight to share some information with you. Before I get started, I do wanna introduce the committee members that are here with us. For those of you that don't know the committee members, we got Ms. Bobby Shepherd in the back. Raise your hand, Ms. Bobby. Mr. Pastor Kenny Williams is not here tonight with us. He couldn't make it. We got Ms. Dana Herring with us tonight. I don't see Mr. Dan Elmore. He can't be with us tonight. Ms. Barbara Morgan, she's here with us. And myself, along with Baxter, we serve as the committee that has spent countless hours trying to put this proposal together and analyze all the things that were going on. So tonight, I just wanna give you an overview that was shared at the previous meeting before you had decided that we would have this work session tonight. So Baxter presented to the board about two weeks ago all the information that you have at hand. Hopefully, you've had that, had a chance to review it, and understand what we're trying to accomplish. So we, as a committee, in a whole month of May, every Tuesday, every Thursday, we'd spend two hours listening at all your directors throughout the county. Each one came in with their presentations, asking us what we consider their projects, along with any other things that they may wanted to add at that point. But they had four presentations. We all received those. We were able to ask questions on those nights, and we tried to get a full understanding of what was going on. So a lot of time, a lot of effort was placed into this. And strategically, we took it and we analyzed it. We sat down at that point as a committee, and we tried to look at every single project based upon the funding that they estimated that would be coming in. And so based on that funding, we took and we kinda percentage-wise everything out. We looked at public safety. We looked at infrastructure. We looked at all the things you got listed here, the public safety, the quality of life, the infrastructure, and last but not least, the debt that the county had. And we kinda gave a percentage of that. And we, as a committee, kinda said, hey, we want a large portion to go into public safety. The next highest portion, I think, went in infrastructure. And we had the debt in there, along with the quality of life. Now, we wish we could've given every single person that presented us something their wish list. But based upon the allocation and the dollars that we're estimating to have, we were limited. We had to just make some decisions. And to be honest with you, it was probably a really tough decision for all of us to sit down and to say, we're gonna give money to this and not for that. So we felt like we presented you with a great recommendation here. And we understand that it's up to you, as board members, to make a decision on what gets allocated and where. But we, as a board, we really put the time and the effort and the strategy in trying to make this a good recommendation to you. And so what you have before you is our recommendation. And if there are any changes that needs to be made, we understand that you, as commissioners, will have the privilege to do that. We spent a lot of time with Jarvis, spent a lot of time with Jeff, sitting there, and they coached and counseled us through all the decisions that we were making. Sometime, we were robbing Peter to pay Paul in terms of this. But it all shook out like we thought it would. So the recommendations are here. We and a couple of committee members that are with me here today are willing to answer any questions you may have about how we come up with those decisions. And then it'll be in your hands then to make a decision on what we do and how we do it. So that's a quick overview, and we appreciate it. We, as a team, we appreciate the opportunity to serve this county. We appreciate the opportunity to sit down and work this hard. So we do hope you use most of our recommendations. So with that in mind, I'll entertain any questions, or I'll turn it back over to Mr. Sims.
Thank you so much, Mr. Terrell, for your service. Not only you, but the rest of the SPOS committee. We thank you guys for serving. We do understand that this was a tedious task, and we know it's something that is important to our community.
Absolutely.
So we thank you and your team for all that you do. Thank you so much. I'm gonna turn it now back over to Mr. Sims. And thank you for your overview.
We are here. If y'all have any questions, we're gonna sit in the meeting for a minute with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also like to just recognize the SPOS committee for doing a great job with the recommendation that we have before us today. As the Vice Chair indicated, they did take a holistic approach with coming up with this list. And based on the list that we have before us, I am in support of the list. I think that it tries to make an attempt to tackle all of the facing issues that we have as a county, whether it's public safety, infrastructure, quality of life. I think they did a great job with trying to address those. So I think that the list that we have before us is a great reflection of what we can do for our county as using SPOS dollars. We also today received a letter from our county attorney. Basically, it's about, he had a meeting with the cities. And I'll be happy to allow the county attorney to kinda go over the findings from the meetings from the cities.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Sims. And the meeting was the joint city-county meeting we had last week. The cities had an opportunity to come forward and present their... The cities had a chance to come here and present their thoughts and views on the SPOS. The main takeaway from that is the county has proposed purely population-based allocation of the SPOS revenues. That would be 82.73% to the county and 17.27% to the cities. So that is just purely driven by the population statistics for the county. The cities have requested, instead of 17.27, that their share goes up to 24%. That would reduce the county's share to 76%. So at 76%, the county would have $82 million and $80,000. The way the SPOS statute works is the baseline is that a SPOS is for five years. If there's an agreement between the cities and the county on how the SPOS revenue should be allocated, the SPOS would be extended up to six years. Alternatively, if the county were to identify Level 1 projects, which means it's your administration building, buildings for constitutional officers, courthouse, jail, health department building, if you were to identify projects that totaled 24 months' worth of SPOS collections, then those projects would be taken off the top. The SPOS would be extended for an additional year, so you would get back up to your six years. And then by default, the remaining SPOS funds would be allocated between the county and the cities based on population. So we would be back at that population number under that approach. But the city's share would be greatly reduced. In my view, the first thing that the county has to decide is how to respond to the city's offer. This is a negotiation. And once the board is comfortable with what percentage would be going to the county and the cities, then you will know what the estimated projection of the SPOS revenues are for the county, and that would help you refine your list. So my recommendation would be, that would be the first point of discussion. There's an offer on the table of 76% to the county and 24% to the cities.
Commissioners, do you have any questions? Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And this goes to the county attorney. What had we given the cities in prior years, six years?
Bear with me for just a second. I've got that here in front of me. The question was, what did the cities receive previously? Yeah, bear with me for just a second. I did the math earlier today. Okay, so for the 2017 SPOS, the county had 78%, and that would've left 22% for the cities. The 2017 SPOS, and again, that was more in line with where the population was in 2017. But the 2017 agreement provided that, to the extent that the SPOS generated more revenue than what was anticipated, those additional revenues would be distributed differently. So once we hit that number, the county's share went from 78% to 75%. And the city of Covingtons went from 14.55% to 18.47. And those figures are substantial. One of the things we heard from the city last week was that the county's population proposal would reduce their monthly collections under SPOS. And that's true, but it's not as much of a reduction from where they were originally. It's a reduction from that escalation they negotiated for. That would only come at the end of a SPOS.
You have something else? Go ahead. So, I mean, I'm asking, and I think you and the county managers are supposed to be negotiating, is that why not during the negotiations, well, you got this amount of money in 2017 SPOS? Say, why can't we do something similar, close to what we did, as anticipated? I believe it's gonna be similar to 2017 SPOS. I mean, so I'm just kinda trying to understand why wouldn't we negotiate first with what they had received, similar to the same population? I think it's about a couple thousand or different, from 17 to 22?
I just wanna make sure I understand the question. Is the question, why don't we put an escalation clause in this SPOS where they get a percentage for until we hit, hopefully, 108 million? That is certainly something the board could consider.
Okay, so let me make sure I understand what Commissioner Henderson was saying. So they would get more on the overages? That's right. Okay.
That's what he was suggesting.
Okay, I got you.
Just a minute, just a minute. Let's see. Definitely agreed to similar last time. And I don't see why we couldn't negotiate the same with this SPOS, in which with the overage, I think we came up with, the county's share was a few million dollars more, still with the overage. And I think it was win-win for us, and also was a win-win for the cities.
Commissioner Cowan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I would express to you how I felt about things. The city of Covington, half of that city's in District 5, half of it's in District 4. Anything that we do is gonna help the county. You can look at the city different than the county, but they're really, if you look at a map, Covington and all the cities are inside the county limits. So anything that we do, road-wise, infrastructure-wise, whatever, benefits the county in an indirect way. And I don't think that, I mean, we struggle, of course, I was in city government for a long time, and I know what that struggle was about, was SPOS money. And quite frankly, I just think that with the kind of traffic that we have coming into town, the square has become a center of entertainment or whatever. It draws a lot of people here. It uses a lot of our roads and everything, or it uses a lot of the city's roads and everything. And they're gonna have to have money to fix all that. So I'm strongly supportive of the cities. Mansfield, New Bern, Porter Dale, Oxford. All those cities need as much money as they can to keep their infrastructure up. Thank you.
Commissioner Sanders.
My question would be in regards to the projects that the committee actually came up with. Would that reduce some of the funding, or would they have to change that if we actually go up in the numbers? Because what did they base this on? What percentage did they base these projects on?
So originally, the committee was working off of a lower percentage. So their initial work was done, estimated 81,251,000. And so that's the column you see, almost second from the far right. That's their recommendation. Based on a population split, that number would go up to 89 million. And so the committee was able to take that money and say, well, if we had that additional 5 million, these were the next projects in line that just missed the cut. So if you're working off of this sheet, it's really this additional from the IGA that we're talking about. That's the difference between the city's offer and the county's offer.
Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I understand the reasoning that the ask by the municipalities, and I certainly do. It makes sense to me. But why wouldn't we wanna look at some type of compromise? If they're asking for a 676-24 split, I think it'd be reasonable to say to use an 80-20 split, I believe. It's just my suggestion that it shows our sincere willingness to partner with our municipalities. I got two municipalities in my district. So I gotta hear, I got those guys in this ear. Or any variation of that. And then the overages, the overages stay relative to what the original split is, would be a starting point. And then we work our way from there, if people are willing to, if we're willing to compromise on that. So it's my suggestion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You have something, Mr. Sims?
Only observation was brought to my attention, and I think we mentioned it last time, the Chiller from the sheriff, that project has been completed. So that would need to be taken off.
Anything else, Commissioners? Any more questions? Commissioner Sanders.
So where did the funding from the Chiller come from? Does it need to be reimbursed, or what? Everything's, I was just curious.
It was funded from general funds.
Let's clarify that.
General fund.
Let's clarify that. Was it come from his budget or our general fund? His general fund, okay.
Okay. So that doesn't need to be put back, or, I know the legal can answer that. Is that...
No, so it came from his budget? So he had it in his budget? So he utilized funds out of his budget?
Correct. And also, the number that we were, the SPOS committee were using, if you notice on the spreadsheet, it was 84 million. Also, they also budgeted for a contingency for about $2.7 million. And that's how the total work budget for the 81. So that's how they came up with that number. I think that needs to be noted.
I got Commissioner Edwards, and then I come to you, and then I come to you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the half million for the Chiller was from FY '22 budget, or FY '23 budget? So it was last year's budget, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So he had it in his budget. I guess he, I don't wanna speak for him. He had to ask finance.
I think it was emergency purchase, and that's why they had to go ahead and purchase it.
But I think her question is...
That project now is open. That remains, the 500,000 remains open for allocation of your choice.
So that was just, Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's what I was gonna ask. So now that that 500,000 isn't allocated on our SPOS project list, now does this board just decide where that 500,000 needs to go? I'm gonna be first to say, I think it should go towards the Aquatic Center. Since the Aquatic Center didn't get anything at all. That's been a project that has been really, the community is wanting. It has been something that was on our Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And at least that 500,000 can start working towards getting that particular project moving in the direction where we can actually get it, where we can begin to complete and work towards that particular project. So that would be my recommendation of where that 500,000 goes.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Sanders.
My question was answered, but I do have a question in regards to Commissioner Mason's. Why did, can we have the SPOS committee tell us why they didn't put it on the list? I was at the meeting a little bit, but I wanted them to understand. Because I don't want it to look like I'm saying it. I wanna hear from the citizens.
I'll share with you, here. Again, we put weight on the four different things that we thought were very important. Public safety, infrastructure, quality of life, and debt. And when we started talking about the Aquatic Center, the Aquatic Center was going to be a project that entails some other things. The $6 million that you were asking for the aquatic was gonna do some infrastructure. And then we were gonna bring in some outside developer to be able to be a part of that, to build and manage and do the Aquatic Center. So Commissioner Mason, I think that we, as a committee, didn't think that it wasn't an important project. We thought that there were others that we felt were more important than bringing the aquatic. Now, there were some questions about where it would be, where it would be located. And I know initially, everybody was talking about possibly in the Denny Dobbs Park, near there. And there were some questions among us as committee members, like, is that the perfect location? I think that if we had gotten funding, that was something we were gonna have to talk about and make a recommendation on. But when we were looking at this, we decided that $6 million is a good idea for the Aquatic Center. But there were a lot of other involvement with that, that once you allocate that funding, you had to go out and get some private company, come in, build, manage, all this other stuff. And we thought the dollars would be used in some other areas better. So that was our strategy in terms of determining that. Does that, any other questions about that?
Yes, thank you.
That make sense?
Yes. You had a question? Okay, go ahead.
And I respect that from the committee, and I hear exactly what you're saying. But that also doesn't sit well with the residents, who are taxpayers, and who do want to see it moving in that direction. So I get the committee's perspective. I respect the committee's perspective. But also, we wanna look at everything from a whole, because there are citizens that would like to see an additional return on their investment. Because they are taxpayers, they are paying into the SPOS as well. And so we don't wanna get into a position where we're just negating them all together. Now, they may not get the full $6 million. They may not get the full amount of the actual project itself, because it's gonna cost more than $6 million. But if there were some seed money going towards moving in that direction, at least the residents will see that this board and the SPOS committee are saying, okay, they hear us. So at least they're trying to make some level of effort to provide what they're looking for and what their expectation is.
I fully understand where you are. And I think this committee, I know Dana's here, Bobby's here as well. I think as a committee, we gave it a serious look. But given all the information that Jeff provided to us, we just thought that there were some other priorities that we could use. And now, I mean, even now, if you took the 500,000 and allocated it to that, what would that really do? And you need $6 million. You see what I'm saying? So we just thought that there were some other priorities that we really, really needed. and we made those recommendations based on that. But I, you know, I'd love to see an Aquatic Center here. And, cause, you know, one of the things that we also talked about too, Commissioner Mason, was we know that that particular project could be, be an entrepreneurship and make money for this county, cause it would bring in other, other people that are competition, and folks that'll be staying at our hotels, and eating our food, and buying other things within the city. So it, it looked good, but it's gonna take a lot more money than six million dollars to get this kind of project off the ground, and we, we thought it'd be better used somewhere else.
And you're absolutely correct. I don't disagree with that. But we can say that about several projects that are on this list.
Right.
That the SPOS dollars are not gonna fully fund it. So if we're using that as our measurement tool, then a lot of these projects on here, we wouldn't be doing. Because the SPOS amount that's on here are not gonna fully fund those projects. It's just, we're starting on those projects, and we're gonna have to find other revenue to complete those projects. So if we're using that as a measurement tool, that, well, it's not gonna fully fund it, then there are several projects we would go back and revisit to say, well, this dollar amount that we've allocated for that project is not gonna fully fund it, but we have decided to allocate funds towards that particular project, even though it's not gonna fully fund it.
Makes sense, that makes sense.
So I, I just don't want to use that as a measuring tool. Let's look at, what does the overall community desire? And when we look at our Parks and Recs Master Plan, what is that Master Plan actually saying that this community is ready for?
Makes sense.
And so those are things that we know concretely is what this community is ready for. There are some hopes, there are some wishes, there are some things that we may think people want, but what does the statistical data say?
That makes sense.
That the community is ready for, and that they're looking for.
Well, you know, I, I'll say this, and I answer any additional question, but I'll say this. We, we put our recommendation based on what I just shared with you. And you as commissioners will ultimately make this decision. So if you feel like we should reallocate, or you want to reallocate some money toward a project that didn't make this list, I think y'all can have that discussion, and, and vote on it, and make those decisions. But these are the recommendations that we as a committee put forth, and we're hoping that you use these. But if you can come up with some more dollars, we'd, we'd love to see the Aquatic Center here. And, and I'm just being real. But I get, I get your point too about some of the other projects. I get that point. And if people are gonna vote on an Aquatic Center, if we can get this passed through our citizens here in this county, by having that on there, maybe we should reconsider that as a board. But I think us as a committee, we presented what we thought was, was best for this county, based on the information that we received.
And I think you all did a great job.
Thank you so much.
I appreciate what you did, and not taking away what you did. Just doing my best to just think and look at things from a completely different perspective.
But I, I love that idea, because I think, I think it can make some money for this county.
It can. And it being on the western side of the county, it's not only gonna be Newton County residents that will benefit or support. But you also have neighboring counties, bordering counties, Henry County.
Absolutely.
You have Rockdale County, you have several counties, even DeKalb is really not that far, that will make memberships, and they will invest, and they will come, and they will visit that location as well. So there are some great benefits.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Listen, I'm gonna, again, I thank you guys for all that you guys, hold on for a second. I thank you guys for all that, that you.
I see.
No, no, but I'm.
I'm good though. Listen, I've been here before, Mr. Henderson.
Yeah, but, but I'm finna pull you out of the hot seat. So, again, thank you so much for the time and all the efforts that you guys put, all of you, that y'all, I know it was a lot coming up here twice a week, and so we appreciate that. I think I can speak on behalf of all the board members and say, we appreciate that, every one of you.
We're glad, sir.
Y'all made a, a recommendation to the board. And so now, I'm gonna say thank you, and I'm gonna let you go back to your seat, and I'm gonna have a little word with the board right quick. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm gonna come to you in just a second, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Board of, I got you after, Mr. Sims. Commissioners, guys, we have tasked a committee to do a job, they did their job. Now, they turned their recommendations back over to the six of us, including, well, seven, including the county manager, to make decisions on how we're gonna proceed forward. They simply made recommendations. Now, you guys, you have the task of putting a final stamp on this. So that's what we're tasked with tonight. I think honestly, first, what we need to do, I'm gonna ask Brittany, do she believe that we will collect over a hundred and eight million? You, you think that we'll exceed that?
If the, if the economy continues strongly, yes, I do think we will.
Okay. Now, I want to, I want to, the board, we need to make a decision on how we want to move forward with the cities, first of all. That way, we're gonna know exactly what we're dealing with on how to move forward with these projects. So again, the SPOS committee, they made their recommendation, they turned it over to the board of commissioners. Now, guys, it's our duty to determine how we're gonna move and proceed forward. Mr. Sims has a question, Commissioner Cowan has a question, and then coming back to Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and that's where I was kinda thinking as well. Committee provided us a great project list at this point. We also received a, I think a fair recommendation from Commissioner Edwards indicating the eighty-twenty. I think that particular split would provide us funding for the projects that we have listed as the county, as well as working with our cities that would also increase their funding level from the previous SPOS. So I think that is a fair split. I do know that we have pressing deadlines approaching us for the November election, as far as having this SPOS on the referendum. And I do know we need to go ahead and move forward with our decisions if, if, if we're gonna go ahead and have this there.
July nineteenth, we need to be making a move, yeah.
Yes, so I, I think we, we have a good number as far as the eighty-twenty. I think the SPOS committee also provided a good list, as well as we have our finance director here that's able to talk about some bond financing, that might also, we're able to pick up a few more projects with the bond financing. I'd like Brittany to talk about that for us as well.
Okay. Let me get to the two commissioners' questions, and then I come back to, to Brittany.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cowan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Aaron, would you explain for the board what happens if projects are not completed during the SPOS time? What happens to the SPOS money?
Yes, sir. So the, the way the SPOS law is developed is, once a county or a city puts a project on the ballot, the, the county and city are committing themselves to completing that project. It needs to be completed. It can be scaled back, but it has to be completed. So as, as a result, what you oftentimes see on SPOS ballots is very generic projects. You will see, you know, a pool of money set aside for, quote, "transportation improvements", something like that, because the city or county is hedging their bets. And if the SPOS doesn't bring in the revenue that they're hoping it will, that gives them a little bit of cushion to know that we can scale back our projects without facing a lawsuit for failing to deliver on the project. Because, you know, we, we have to project six years out, and, and guess about where the economy's gonna be in six years. I, I don't think anyone projected we'd be here two years ago, right? Things change quickly. So my recommendation would be, to the extent you have to identify projects, you know, only identify those that, that have to be. Let's keep the categories broad with respect to transportation to the extent possible. One of the other things that allows us to do is projects, you know, it's not unusual for a project to come in below budget or above budget. And by giving yourself a little bit of flexibility, if, if a project can be completed early and under budget, that frees up revenues that can be moved over to another project that may be exceeding its budget. But just to go back and answer your question, at the end of the day, if a project is listed, it must be completed. And I guess to tie that back around, earlier we were discussing partially completed projects, putting some revenue towards that. If, if that's the goal, then we need to be careful in how we word that project. So say, for example, five-hundred thousand towards an Aquatic Center, we wouldn't want the public to go vote thinking they were voting to allocate six million to complete an Aquatic Center. We would have to be careful in how we define that project so that we could deliver on what the county was promising. Did that answer your question?
Not quite.
Okay.
If money's not used for a project, let's say, let's use the Aquatic Center since it's come up. If it's not built, or whatever, there's not enough money there. At the end of the term of the SPOS, the money that's allocated goes back to the general fund to pay general obligation debt, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. So it's possible that we don't get something done. I know this happened with the downtown Civic Center a few years back. That money had to be given back to the general fund. We need to be careful about projects and asking for them to be built over a period of time, hoping that money will come in for them, because it may not. I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can now.
Okay. We gotta be careful about hoping for money to come in, because it may not. You may not have enough money to build what you want to build. So we want to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So my question is for Aaron, and maybe for the county manager. If, if we went to some type compromise, we'll just say eighty-twenty right now, I don't know what that's gonna be. But an eighty-twenty compromise, what does that do to that far-right column under additional from IGA? What is, what is that in? Because I know we've got Newton Trails at a million. So what, what does that do to that column if we go to a different split than what we had originally intended?
So the, the difference between the, I'm sorry, the eighty-four million projected by the, that was used by the SPOS committee in the second column from the right, and the, and the projected based on population is about five-point-three million. And so if we go from, say, eighty-two percent to eighty percent, the county goes down to eighty-six-point-four. So that would basically give you two-point-four million to allocate towards this column. You get an additional five-hundred thousand, because we're, we're taking the HVAC chiller off. So that gives you about two-point-nine to split among these projects. Right now, you've got five million, so you're going to have to take off two-point-one million from that list.
All right, so two-point-nine as opposed to five in that column total?
That's, that's right.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm gonna let Commissioner Henderson go, and then we're gonna bring up, did you have your hand up? Okay. Commissioner Henderson?
I'll just tell you kinda, kinda where I'm at. I know we had, we had talked a little bit, I think prior to, about the Cousin project, and also about the Nelson Heights project. We walked the Cousin when we purchased it, one-point-five million. We walked it, and we said that we were gonna put it on the SPOS, and that we were gonna repair it. Then we made, which I wasn't a part of, some plans to, to build a community center. I think it had two levels on it. I think Mr. Jeff Frym did the plans for the county to restore that building, and then build a new part on it. And I'm, you know, I'm not all that merch, you know, and some people are. But one thing I do do is I keep my word. And maybe that's all I have is my word, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep that. And so I think we need to, and I think it was said best by one of the commissioners, whom I won't name, said, "Let's do these projects that we have, or make sure that they are done, that we have already committed to." Now, we know we committed to our Cousin. We know we committed to Nelson Heights years ago, seventeen years ago. And I think when the committee came up, not this committee, SPOS committee, but the other came up, and said, "Well, you know, these, these other projects, even though you said it, say, just forget about it. Say, just turn the page on them." It's hard for me to turn the page on something that we've already, or that I believe that we committed to. I guess I'm a firm believer that my word is my bond, and I have to kinda stick to it in spite of. And that's kinda where, you know, I'm, I'm standing on, is that. Is that we had a commitment for the, at least that eight million for Cousin. And the last estimate I got for Nelson Heights, it was five million. And I think at one point, it was a million dollars on that. I think it, there should be a, a discussion on funding those projects. And then, you know, maybe we need it at some point, it's too late. That's really why I wanted to have a discussion a month ago, especially about Cousin, to sit down with the citizens and talk about it. But I was not afforded that opportunity. But nevertheless, right now, I am the commissioner, and we want to, I would like for this board to honor their commitment to their projects and those projects. And if we had to, if we have to rearrange, if we had to burn some money, I think there was one avenue that the, the county manager, CM, said that may be at our disposal. I think we, we need to, because as I looked at most of these projects on this list, I don't think, and I'm no genius, and I can't tell the future, but I don't believe it'll pass, because you don't have enough on it, what I think the citizens want. And I think we should have had, the board, we should have had more meetings about around this horseshoe, what we might think, or we believe that might be placed on it, that would, that would make the citizens want to go out and vote for it. Because it's something in there that is a piece of, of their community, that they would like to be, seem done in their community. And I'm gonna say this, and I'm gonna close out. I believe that the, the idea of what District Two Commissioner is, is Aquatic Center, that's a great idea. And I think that's something that we do, we do need. I never have just believed in, in public monies and private agreements. Like what Commissioner Cowan had said, we were gonna do that Civic Center right over there on the property, county property. And it took us a while, and all the motel hotels who wanted to move in and do it, moved on. And so we had no other choice but to take and put the money back into the general fund. So you don't want to do long projects. But we want to do projects that the people in Newton County, what they want. And we need to understand that and do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Guys, again, I think we need to get to some type of agreement on how we're gonna move forward with the cities. That way, we'll know how we're gonna move forward with our project lists. And I do understand that there are some changes that you guys want to make to the list. But in order to get to those changes, we need to find out how we want to proceed forward with, how we, how we want to proceed forward with the recommendations that the city made. Do we want to counter that recommendation? I, I did hear eighty-twenty. But we need to get some type of feedback from you guys, so. But we need to get some type of feedback from you guys so we know how to move forward. That way, we can go ahead and start tackling this list in front of us. I got Commissioner Sanders and then I come to Commissioner Mason.
My question is encompassing with the city projects that were presented to us because I see that we have some projects on here that are gonna be funded by the money that's coming to the county. Now, are those funds being removed and gonna be only on the city's dollars or we're partnering with them on those projects? Because some of the things that he actually submitted to us today that the cities want done are actually listed on this list for us to cover.
We received the project list from the city of Covington, separate, their list.
Okay. So, so my question is like, some of the million dollar ones that, these are the same, some of the same projects that they actually submitted to us, that's gonna be coming out of their twenty percent, seventeen percent?
Yeah.
So are we gonna take these projects off of here and gonna, gonna go up under the city? So that's, that's my question.
So, so the, so the question, so the question is, there are some projects that's on this list, that's on the city list as well, is what she's asking. So if we give the city a increase, she's asking whether those projects come off of our list?
I mean, that, that makes sense for them too, but what specific project is on the list that is also on the city's list?
You have CID and I'm not sure if Newton Trail, all those were on, that's why I went to ask.
CID was, the CID portion was actually for both.
So that was my question.
Yeah, they were seeking funding from the city and the county.
Okay. That's all I was asking.
Yes.
Yeah. Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I, I guess maybe what we do need to do is...
I'm, I'm gonna poll the board and just as soon as you get through with your questions, I'm about to poll the board.
So actually, that's what I was gonna say.
Okay.
I was just gonna give my feedback on the eighty twenty. If, if we, are we gonna take a vote on that tonight?
We're about to, it was a recommendation. So Commissioner Mason, I mean Commissioner Edwards made that recommendation. I'm gonna poll the board and I don't think we need, we don't need to vote on that, do we? Not yet, because it's just negotiations right now. So I'm gonna poll the board and that's what we're gonna go back, we'll go back with. So I know how...
Okay, that's what I was gonna ask.
Okay. So I know how Commissioner Edwards feel about it because he made a recommendation, so...
I'm okay with the eighty twenty as well.
Okay.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders. Commissioner Henderson.
I have a question, and I guess this is to the county attorney. Is that more than what they were asking for or is it less or is it more?
Oh, what are they asking for?
It's a reduction from what they're asking for. The, the cities are asking for twenty-four percent.
Okay, I got you.
And the offer is to give them twenty.
But it's more than what they received last year? I mean, the last SPOLOST. Yeah.
I agree.
Okay. Commissioner Cowan? You wanna agree? Okay. So there's, there's four people that agrees, one person that don't. So now, we got those orders. So now we can start discussing these projects. Commissioner Henderson just, he led off with his discussion a few minutes ago about the two projects that he wanted to give some attention to. Anyone else want to chime in? Commissioner Edwards, go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. My project didn't make the list. Not only didn't get funded, it didn't make the list. And I had state matching funds, partially state matching funds. I had a one, only a one point five million dollar ask, not upset with the committee, they did exactly what they were supposed to do. But I'm asking this board for one point five million for a park in the southwestern part of this county, primarily for the use of the western residents, for the use of the western residents, western parts, citizens' residents, my western citizenry, how about that? So, you know, I look, I look back at the end of the two thousand seventeen SPOLOST, we had excess funds of over four million and they went to four, at least four projects that are included on the current SPOLOST. Over four million dollars in excess, if I'm reading this correctly. And some of the projects on here now total, worthy projects, don't get me wrong, worthy projects, some of them total in excess of twelve million dollars, and I couldn't get one point five million. I'm asking for, to pull one point five million from somewhere for a park in the southwestern part of this county for District One. My last, in the two thousand seventeen SPOLOST, the commissioner here before me designated his, that's another question, designated his county, his commissioner appropriated amount for a shelter that was not in his district. Absolutely a worthy cause. I think it was money well spent. So I'm asking this time for one point five million for District One. That, that's my ask right now to find one point five million in, either in, either in the excess SPOLOST funds of the two seven, two thousand seventeen SPOLOST, if they haven't already been spent or alloc, or that money moved or within this SPOLOST. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Okay. Let me bring Brittany up and let her talk about, you want her to talk about the bonds, right? So, go ahead, because I got a couple of questions about that, but go ahead. Go ahead.
Just observation, Commissioner Edwards, your one point five million trail, that was include, one point five million ask was included in the Newton Trails total project of three point seven. And if you see in the additional ask, we allocated one million for it. Jeff Prime indicated he, he lumped all those projects together.
Okay. What's, say that again?
And your project, it was listed in the Newton Trails of the total of three point seven? Yes, sir. So the, the Newton Trails asked for two point two million. And when you came together with your particular project, because it actually intersects at a, at a Newton Trail, Yellow River Trail system, we added that one point five million in that request. So the three point seven that is in the original amount requested was for both projects. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I would like to retract all the facetious comments I just made.
Wow. That's great. Wow. Wow. Okay. So I'm, I'm gonna ask Brittany to come up so we can talk about bonding because, because I, I might be thinking wrong about bonding. But I, I was thinking that bonding, we was gonna pick projects that we deem that had significant importance of right now to get started on those other projects that we bond. Is that not correct?
So there's two bond scenarios. There's gonna be a SPOLOST, potential SPOLOST go bond. And the SPOLOST go bond would be bonding this, projects on the SPOLOST referendum that you want to go ahead and get started earlier before the collections roll in. So under the debt service project on the SPOLOST recommendation, there was ten million dollars. In the ten million dollars, three million of that, roughly three million, it depends on, the interest rates are obviously fluctuating, but roughly three million dollars of that would go to pay the interest on the bond for the SPOLOST projects if the bond is around twenty-five million dollars. So that left a remaining seven million dollars in the debt service project. We had initially proposed that as to pay down current county SPOLOST, or current county debt. However, you could also utilize that seven million dollars to take out new bonds, to fund some projects that maybe did not get on the SPOLOST list. And then that seven million, if you bonded ten million dollars for six years, the seven million dollars would pay the bond for around four years. And if you bonded fifteen million dollars, that would pay around two and a half years of a six-year bond. So those are just a couple of options for projects that may, don't end up on the SPOLOST referendum.
Okay. Go ahead.
And this just was our way of trying to identify additional revenue source for adding some of the projects that not make the list. This was a, a way of us trying to give you all another option.
Commissioner Mason? Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. So if the committee recommendation, I still have nothing under Newton Trails and therefore my one point five million dollar park, so there's, there's still no funding there. I did make the list. I stand corrected, I made the list, apparently. There is a one million dollar, if we keep the seventy, if we keep the current split, there is the one million for Newton Trails and I'm not gonna infringe on that with my park. So my park is, the, the one point five million dollar park is still unfunded, is, is my point. So I still have an ask. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Uh-huh. So, so I'm thinking that the split ticket down, reduced it down from five million to two point nine, you said? Yeah. Okay. So there's some decisions that's gonna have to be made about that as well. Commissioner Mason, you have anything?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I, just adding to, and I was looking at this as well, I think we are looking at two different columns. I think we were looking at the amount requested and the committee recommendation. So when you look at the committee recommendation lines, there are several projects, including Newton Trails. So you have Nelson Heights Improvement, Newton County Agricultural Center, Newton Trails, Parks and Recreation, R.L. Cousins, R.L. Cousins Community Center, Senior Services, Enrichment Center, and Washington Street. Those are the items that, under the committee recommendation, that are blank, that's not included in that total amount from the committee recommendation. So it looks like none of those projects will actually be on the referendum in November. And I think we were looking at the amount requested instead of the committee recommendation. And so I guess that's what we need to get clarity, or should we only be focused on the committee recommendation?
Yes.
So that means all of those other items that don't have a figure next to them means that none of them are going to be included in this SPOLOST.
That, now that's a decision that, as it sits now?
Correct.
Yes. But that's a decision that the board will have to make. But yes, you are correct.
So that goes back to what Commissioner Edwards was saying. We see in the amount requested, there's three point seven million. But when you go to the committee recommendation, it's zero. So that means that that three point seven that's requested isn't what the committee is recommending.
That's correct.
Okay. Just wanted to bring clarity. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You want to tackle that? Sir?
Sure. You're correct, Commissioner Mason. And the far right column where it says additional from IGA, that column came from myself based on having conversations with the county attorney indicating we will receive the additional percentage. And that was five million dollars. And based on feedback from the committee, I selected those five particular projects. They had a lot of conversation and I thought it would be a, a good approach to tackle those particular projects forest countywide. That's why those five particular projects were selected based on my watching and observing the committee have debate about all of the projects.
Okay. Okay. So right now, there's a request from Commissioner Edwards of one point five million for a park on the, the eastern side of town. Is that correct? On the south, well, southwest side of town? That did not make the committee recommendations. I'm getting ready to come to you. And so Commissioner Mason, are you done? You're done? Okay. Commissioner Sanders?
I just have a question for Commissioner Edwards. So do you guys already, is the one point five enough? Do you already have the land for, also?
I have a site picked out, I believe, one point five million, you know, for the site and some, and some equipment. The state has, the state has given some money for, it's actually only a little...
Okay. Okay. So you already have additional funds to go, okay.
There's additional money from the state for improvements to the site. Now, the downside of it, if I might, Ms. Chairman?
Go ahead.
The downside of that is...
B, if I can't secure this property, we've still gotta spend this money on, on, on a project and my promise was in the southwestern part of the county. So we'd have to go to Plan B.
On a park?
Which I think we've done, yeah, for a park, which I think we've done numerous occasions on other, other projects. So that was, that was my ask. I believe one point five will be fine. I believe I can secure private, other private funding as well.
That's all mine. I'm just happy to see District Three finally get some quality of life, so I don't have any comments. Thank you.
And I heard from, we heard Commissioner Henderson comments about his project.
If, if I just could add and if, you know, if we consider, consider it, the, and I just go back to the overview, eight million dollars, it was, I think, from the proposal that I've, had been reading in the, in the plan, kind of here somewhere, the R.L. Cousin, the R.L. Cousin Community Center plan. And I think to do, I think the total cost of what they were, what was being proposed was about sixteen million. And when more we looked at it, we thought that the, possibly, and I didn't have a chance to speak with Mr. Jeff Prime, that the eight million dollars would maybe get half of that, I think, if, if my math is kind of, and I guess I'm asking, because the community center consists of two levels, the first floor and the second floor. And I was thinking about just the first floor and that the eight million dollars would be somewhat, I think it was seven, seven and a half million would be somewhat sufficient to do that first level of it, because I didn't want to... And I, for seven and a half, and I said that another half a million would, would do some work on the football field, Wolverine football field, because I think it was, when I talked to Rick Department, it was needing some work to be did on it to make it a little bit better for the kids in order to play on it. And I think, yeah, I think the estimate was three hundred thousand, about two hundred fifty to three hundred thousand dollars to do that. And then twenty-five thousand for a commemorative statue of the Cousin School Historic March from Cousin to the square. And then on the backside of it, it's my understanding that we want to do another twenty thousand for Mr. Alman Turner, because his community, his last thing that he had wanted to be done in, in the community, he was trying to put up a community watch group and he wanted to put signage up with the community name and that they had a community watch. And we wanted to make that happen for that community. And so the total debt was eight million. And then we went back to Nelson Heights because there was something that I had put on, asked for, went before the SPOLOST committee, explained to them that seventeen years, they were gonna do something, add on the field and stuff, because they moved us to up that way, to add on the field. And I think it was told when I talked to Rick Department, Dwayne, he was saying that the cost factors, he said it was five million dollars to do what we wanted to do over there, from the room to the football field slash soccer field slash track field that will be used by Rick. So that's where we was at. So it was a total of, what, eight, what, thirteen million, I think. If my math's right, Mr. County Manager?
Yes, that's, that's correct. Thank you, sir.
So this is what I want, you know, kind of, just kind of throw that out and hopefully let the, let the citizens put on the ballot and let the citizens decide on that particular issue. And this is what it really boiled, gonna boil down to, whether the citizens want to vote it up or vote it down. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Cowan?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Talking with people in District Five, they're... um, they're not really that interested in parks and things like that. Uh, we are very interested in roads, uh, paving roads, paving, uh, getting ditches cleaned out, um, getting, uh, infrastructure in place, uh, and paying off debt. That seems to be the two primary goals for District Five, so. Those are covered in here. Uh, if it was up to me, I'd do a lot more than what we're doing, but, uh, uh, I really think that's the, um, that's where we, that's where District Five is, is staying, as far as their concerns. Thank you.
Um, Commissioner, um, Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm just combing back over through this list to kinda see, um, where the emphasis lies. Uh, and I'm, and, and maybe, I don't know who can explain it, I don't know if Mr. Sims, or, or Jeff, or our committee can kinda explain to me the difference between, uh, the three point five million that we put towards the countywide park improvements, and then the ten point two million that we put towards the West Side Community Park? Because that sounds like that's the same thing. And so I wanna know the difference of what those two are. Yes, praise him. Bless him.
So, I was about to say, we do have Jeff here, Jeff Prime here to kinda talk. But again, I wanna emphasize that the recommendations came from the committee. They decided on the funding level, uh, from the projects that we provided to them. So, all of the projects, uh, as Jeff Terrell indicated, the directors or the different entities came and presented their projects, uh, with the amount requested, and then the committee, based on their great dialogue, they came up with the funding levels.
Okay, well, and that is, um, so, uh, go ahead, I, I make my comments next, go ahead.
Okay, so, just, just to clarify and answer your questions. So on the countywide park improvements, the comprehensive park master plan identified around seventeen to nineteen million dollars of park projects, deferred maintenance type projects that need to be done on the existing park facilities, uh, around the actual county. Um, Dwayne and his staff took, took that list, knowing that they weren't, they didn't feel like they'd be able to get seventeen million, so they kinda prioritized, and they started off with their highest priority, and that's where they came up with the five point five million of, of how they would allocate those funds to get the highest priority of that particular list. And then, uh, the committee, obviously, just trying to make everything fit and, and cover, as Jeff said earlier, Jeff Terrell said earlier, um, they, they dropped it down to three point five. So all that means is that you'll do less of the countywide improvements than what the five point five, and obviously, you don't address the full seventeen million. The, the West Side Community Park, the, the estimate, uh, to do the total build out on that project was between sixteen and nineteen million dollars. So what we, and that include from land acquisition, design, and building out the components and things that, uh, we had talked with Commissioner Sanders and with Parks and Rec on. So the ten point two seven seven would be to give adequate funds to build, acquire land, design, and build the first phase of that particular project. And we'd have to determine what that first phase is, working with Commissioner Sanders and, or, and the committee, and the board. Was there another part, project you had a question on?
No, but I'm confused.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna let y'all go ahead and finish up, okay?
Okay, so, this is not, this is for, this ten million is for a specific project? Because I don't want us to get into this whole west side issue like we're in right now. Because we say it's for the west side, but then it's for a specific district. So, I don't want it to get to a point where we say it's for the west side, but the focus is not on the west side. Districts Two, Three, and Four encompasses the western side of the county. So I don't want us to get into a point where we say it's for the west side, but it's for District Three. I don't wanna say it's for the west side, but the objective is for District Two. I want it to be, if we're gonna say west side, it could be anywhere on the west side, because that's the same issue that we have right now with the West Side Youth Facility. It says West Side Youth Facility, but we're trying to put it in a specific district. I don't want that same issue again.
Y'all done? You done?
I'm done.
Uh, Commissioner Sanders?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Well, the naming of the west side came from the previous board, so I have nothing to do with that, and it came from the previous commissioner that sat on this seat right here, and named her project the West Side Youth Facility for District Three. So that has nothing to do with me, that was done in twenty seventeen SLOSH. And it's actually written, documented, and the documents were given to me, specifically for District Three. District Three does not have a park. We don't have a Denny Dives, we don't have a city pond, we don't have a pond city, we don't have a walking trail, we don't have nothing. And it's so sad that when a district wants, it's not about me, and I know they're making it about me, and certain people are making it about me. It's about that community that has no way of life, quality of life, and never had it for years. So for those who have it in their district, they should be excited that a community that's almost the most dense, has the most kids, is about to get a park that they can walk in. Because the park that the previous commissioner put in was inside of a subdivision that people didn't even know existed until I got on this board. And they can't even go into that park, because a lot of them have asked to use it, and they were told no, because it's gonna inconvenience the homeowners. So you have to build a park that people can use, because right now, we already spent four hundred thousand dollars in a park that the citizens cannot utilize and maintaining it. It costs almost ten thousand a month to maintain a park that the citizens cannot even utilize. So it's, you should be happy that a, that the citizens, the residents who are paying the tax dollars, and their children are able to get a park, when other commissioners have a huge park with walking trail, a ballpark, has great land, a splash pad, allow these citizens to survive and have quality of life as well. They pay taxes just like anybody else.
Um, Commissioner Henderson?
Uh, thank, thank you, Mr. C. And this is for Jeff, and just changing subjects a little bit. Within that, um, eight million, you know, if it was approved by the board to be put on SLOSH, we want an indoor swimming pool, um, over at the Cousins, the newer part of the eight million. There was something that, um, I think, um, me and the, the certain commissioner rolled over and we looked at, and we thought that would be good for the community and be, it will be under the Recreation Department, because we don't have a pool, uh, as far as in Newton County, under Rick Department, to teach our childrens how to swim throughout the county. And that will serve, I think, a great purpose. And I'm just, just gonna say this, and then I end with a, with a comment. Uh, it's been kids, uh, from towns that I know and, and I love, who have, who have drowned it, uh, who have drowned in swimming in, in creeks and rivers. And it's, it's said that in the summertime it get hot, they don't have a place if they can't go to the wild, or don't have a membership, that they would go to a creek or river, and they can't swim that well and, and be drowneded. And it's something that'll last forever with the families, but it's something that we can do to try and help other kids from, from ending up the same way. And I think we look to, to the future. And my comment led to this, you know, let us work together, I mean, all, all of our districts, work together and just do what we, you know, what a commissioner, uh, want in District Two, and our commissioner want in District Three, and work together and do something for all, all the people. This is what it's all about, that's why we're up here, is to do something in each of our respective communities. And one thing I do know, you can do something in one community in the next few years, if you're gonna change, and you're in a whole different, uh, in a whole different community, but that's good, because it give you the opportunity to do more good things for more people. Thank you, Mr. C.
Thank you.
Chair, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, sir.
I just wanna make sure, were you asking me, uh, whether or not eight million dollars would be adequate for an indoor pool?
We wanted to, we, we wanted that, that, the first phase I was talking so much about, and I, we got talking and listening to all the conversations, and I forgot to mention that. It was that we wanted, we wanted a pool, swimming pool, under Rick, and, you know, we, I guess we'll figure, it would be located at R.L. Cousins. R.L. Cousins, you know, you, you, under the plan that you, uh, that you had did, done, whatever I got there. Under the plan that you had done, it was, it consists of, 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 of one, uh, first floor and second floor. Right here, green space, and we wanted the pool to be placed in there, for it to be configured, configured to get placed in there under Rick, so that you, the indoor swimming pool, that you can, you can learn to realize swimming in it, and the seniors could, uh, guess, whatever, exercise in it, you know, low impact, whatever. And configure that room so that we could, uh, it could be used for, for the community. But instead of two floors, it would be on the one floor, and you would, you would complete, I think, under this plan also as well, it was improvements for the old gym, and I added on, uh, doing improvements for the Wolverine football field too as well, because I, I understand, it's my understanding that, uh, nation, the high schools wanna use it for a, what do you call it, the band? Battle of the Bands. And so we wanted to improve that, so it'd be a nice place, them using that field, uh, for the Battle of the Bands. And, um, commemorated, commemoration out front, because most historic buildings have a commem, have a sum out front, like we did in New, uh, Mansfield. And their old school, out front, commemorating the school, and, um, Historic March from Cousins to the Square. And on the backside of the building, it could, you know, we wanted some commemoration, talking about Mr. Almon Turner, uh, who had his last request, one of the last requests to the community, he was supposed to do a sign, uh, talking about, about their community, and they had told me, and I forgot half of it, but I'm gonna get it written out, if it's, if it's approved by the citizens in County, to do these projects.
So, the only thing I would say is that, um, the ten million dollars that was in the request was for the specific things that you were pointing to in the plan, which was a community center, uh, renovating and adding space, uh, on the front of the building for elections, and then also the groups that are there. So, to the extent that we wanted to, you know, go to eight million and do something different, we could certainly analyze that and work with, you know, with the board and Parks and Rec to determine what that is. So, I mean, I can't tell you right now that we could build an indoor pool for eight million dollars, but what I could tell you is that eight million dollars would go a long way toward doing improvements, um, for that particular facility.
So we, so if we add on additional million dollars, ten million?
Could we do it for ten, what you're asking?
Well, the reason why I'm asking that.
So let me, let me jump in there with you, let me jump in there with you. So, so this is the thing, guys, and you're asking, what you're asking, you're on point for what you're asking, you got the right to ask these questions. But we gotta first figure out where, so there's a re- recommendation list in front of us, guys. We got to first figure out where we're gonna bring that money, and I understand exactly what Commissioner Henderson, and he was asking, he got valid points to do his asking. But we got to first have the board determine where we're gonna pull those funds from. Other than, because the list that's provided in, in front of us don't have that included on, that project included on here. And from what I'm hearing is that's, that's a project that he wants to incorporate on this list. And so we, yeah.
When you get to, you too? Well, just remember Cousins, it was a, it's a project that I wasn't included on, and I called Jeff a few times, and we talked about it. But now that I, I guess I'm kinda, I won't use the word stuck with it, it's a bad term for it, but we need to do something for the citizens that I represent, and after the first part of the year, Commissioner Cowan represented them, and after the first part of the year, I will represent Spring Hill, you know, as far as district wise. But, you know, we love all the people, so we're gonna work off of either our, our work together with it, with that particular project. But one of the things that we need here in Newton County is a swimming pool that we can send our childrens to, to learn them how to swim, 'cause I'm tired of every so often we look in the paper and a child has drowned it, because he or she does not know how to swim. We can solve, uh, hopefully all the problem, but we can do our best to solve that problem, or help solve that problem to the best of our ability. An indoor swimming pool, well, I think would achieve that objective for our citizens. And so, um, you know, I don't think, myself personally, if it was twenty million, that would be too much money to spend on saving somebody's life. I know, I think it's, a life is priceless. And so let's do something, uh, so, I think, so what, what is, what this really boils down to is that, that's why we have a county manager, and, and that's why we have a finance director to help us, if this is the board wishes, to figure out how to get this done, whether it's in District Two, whether it's in District One, or District Three, or Four, or Five, how to get this done for us, if it's the board who wants it done. And I, I understand about our committee, and I love each one of them, and especially Mr. Bobby, 'cause I steal their house a lot, on the other stuff, me and the husband. But we want to do what we feel is best for all our citizens, and some that we know that they need. You can build another road, but it, you know, you probably somebody stepped out there and get ran over, but we know this, this could save lives. So I guess I wanna just make one more, Commissioner Sanders, I may, ten million plus the fifteen million to do, uh, uh, R.L. Cousins and Nelson Heights. Thank you.
Yeah, so again, board, um, I want, I, I can't put enough emphasis on, um, I understand the acts for these projects. Um, but again, we have a list, yeah, we have a list in front of us. Um, it's not a concrete list, it's not a list that's been edged with, in stone, but it is a list that you would have to make changes to. I'm not sure if I can explain this, um, a little better. This is a list that you would have to make changes to if you wanna cha, make, um, add additional projects. You would have to decide where you wanna pull those funds from, from this list that the SLOSH Committee recommend, recommended to us. And that's why we're here tonight, to try to make those determinations. If this is not the list that we want to try to put, um, out to, for the people to, to vote on, and we wanna provide other projects on this list, then we need to try to find a way to pull the funds from these projects to make up the new list that we want to, um, present to the people of Newton County. Um, Commissioner Sanders?
I was thinking, I, I was thinking, maybe if we go line by line and then ask each, I don't know if that'll, that'll take a long time, but ask each commissioner based on that, that might, that might help. And just to, uh, reiterate what Commissioner Henderson was stating, I don't have a problem with a pool. I think a lot of my citizens at the last town hall said the location. So they want it to be a centralized location, 'cause they've been utilizing Conyers facilities. So I, that's what I agree with, it being a location, and I think it might be cheaper if we just do the pool and not a pool, like a natatorium like they have on college campuses, a natatorium versus a whole aquatic center, the pool is what everybody wants. So that might help decrease the cost, but I don't know where the funding gonna come from, because it takes a lot to maintain a pool, so, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Cowan?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Um, we can, we can put a dollar amount in here, and if we have an overage, we can add to it. Or, as we did with Spring Hill Park, we moved some money out of our general fund to cover some of that, or moved it from somewhere. Um, so, I think to move forward tonight would be to put a reasonable dollar amount in here, which is somewhere between eight and ten million dollars, I think, um, without us trying to anticipate where we're gonna be three or four years down the road from here.
So, um, um, can you identify the project that you're talking about?
I'm talking about Cousins School.
Okay, okay.
Um, and, and then go ahead and get it done. And again, I'm personally think that it's better to take care of what you already have, rather than build something brand new. And my reasoning for that is, is that we've already got it, we've already got the infrastructure in place on a lot of things. Uh, let's move forward with it, based on what we have, title to. Uh, let's move forward with it based on what we have titled to. The other thing in terms of Cousin School, I don't know whether there is a group design, helping design that or not, but I would suggest that somebody put together a group of layout, what they want over there, and then give it to Jeff, so he'll have something to formulate a number with. But he can always change the number, just go ahead and put a number in here for the SPOS purposes. And if it comes in up or down, we'll see, but, um, that's what we did with Spring Hill Park, we knew how much we had, which was definitely not enough, uh, to get that done out there. But I, I'd rather see us take care of what we got.
Well, so we got, um, I got Commissioner Mason next, but we got two commissioners, um, that, that are asking for funds for our real cousins school, eight million dollars. Well, um, so, um, just, just wanna make sure everyone heard that, um, Commissioner Mason, go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. So, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at this list, once again, the committee recommendation. And from what I can see, it looks like our SPOS committee has done an excellent job with, uh, what they've done when it comes to, uh, the infrastructure, when it comes to the public safety. Um, the only place that I can see where, if Commissioner Edwards is wanting one point five, if, uh, Commissioner Henderson is wanting eight to ten million dollars, if Commissioner Sanders is wanting something towards a park in District Three, which I think is great, and we should, if we're wanting to put in a pool, maybe not an aquatic center, so there are certain asks that are coming forth today. The only place that I can see where we can pull anything from, which is why I posed this question, is, is the countywide park improvements and the West Side Community Park a duplication? Because if it's, if it is a duplication, then maybe we can take the ten million from the West Side Community Park and maybe split that up to be able to add additional projects, since we don't have land, uh, for a specific project in District Three. We don't have a design for a specific project in District Three, uh, as Commissioner, uh, um, uh, my commissioner on the end.
Cowan.
Cowan said, you know, if we wanna take care of our real cousins, because it's a project that we already have in existence, then maybe that's something that we should visit and say, what is that cost gonna cost us, uh, to look at our cousins? We've already purchased that project, I mean, that, uh, that particular facility, and we haven't really done much with that facility already. So, you know, maybe that's where we should consider, you know, moving those funds. Um, and so I think this board should look at that and say, hey, you know, uh, is that the place where we move those funds? Or is there some other place where we can move those funds from? If we have several commissioners that are asking, uh, and we wanna add, you know, I've heard that we wanna add more projects to the list, um, is it gonna cost us ten million dollars to build a park in District Three? Uh, is it, is that what, you know, how much did it cost us to build the park in Spring Hill? Did it cost us ten million dollars to do that? Um, so, that's what I, we gotta figure out, you know, what is gonna be the, the, the best way to utilize those funds that we have here? And I'm just putting it out there, and I'm just laying everything on the table so that we can have a discussion.
So, let me, let me, are you in support of the acts of, um, the eight million dollars that Commissioner Henderson asked for?
Yes, I don't have an issue with that eight million dollars for our cousins, because we do need to figure out a way to get that done, because we did state, uh, I believe that was in two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one, when we purchased that project, uh, when we purchased that facility, that we were going to develop it, and we haven't as of yet.
Okay. I got Commissioner, um, um, Edwards and then Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. So, this is a question for, uh, county manager, so, public safety fleet replacement. What, was, was some of that capital budget this time? And, and if the wiggle room, that twelve million?
Okay, Commissioner Edwards, twelve million for a public safety fleet replacement, that actually includes both, uh, fire and sheriff replacement. As far as in our capital budget this year, uh, the, the amount for capital was one million dollars. We reduced it. Oh, no, correct, I stand corrected, uh, in order to accommodate the, the will of the, the body of commissioners, we reduced, we eliminated that capital amount.
Okay, so, uh, and have we discussed the opera fund?
No, that is a great point, and I hope to bring that up to you all soon.
You hope to bring up the opera funds?
Yes, utilizing some opera funding to address some of our capital needs.
Do you know, um, um, for vehicles as well?
For capital, just more or less capital, it addressed a lot of capital needs.
Okay. Okay, um, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you. I just wanna, I just wanna be clear, his ten million, I think, when Mr. Jeff came up and we, we spoke, he said in order to incorporate that, when we come back and do have a plan, and we'll call a community, if it passes by the citizens of, of citizens of Newton County, then we will have a community meeting, and we will talk about how the pool would be situated in there, and then how we would address, uh, that particular space and other amenities that may go in there, upon the budget of, of that ten million. And, just let me say this, I'm gonna reiterate this again, I was not a part of these plans. I was not a part of it. It was something that, you know, I came in on the latter end, wanted to have a meeting, nobody wanted to have a meeting with me, because I believed in a compromise with these plans in order to get something that hopefully the citizens, and it'll probably end up being the ten million, what we're talking about now, because I would have had the, um, Mr. Jeff kinda tell me what we need in order to meet the objective for this particular room. I know he told that for, for Nelson Heights, now that was one that I was a part of, but where it seems right now that we're, we may get a million dollars, I'm not sure, for Nelson Heights. But, um, so if we're just gonna get a million, since you done took my other four, three million, four million, then at least I can, uh, bill on, uh, add on a, a classroom, uh, for the, at the community center, and get the grass cut, so it can be open field for the, so that the kids and Rick can practice ball in the next seven months. Thank you.
Thank you, so I didn't get it, I forgot to ask Commissioner Edwards. Um, are you, are you in favor of, um, fixing up our real cousins as well?
That's the county-owned property, isn't it?
Yes.
By law, we have to fix it up.
Okay. So. All right, um, I'm sorry, Commissioner Sanders, I apologize.
It's not more so a question than statement, I just want to clear, Spring Hill Community Park is on county property, so we wanna make sure we clear that up. Um, Commissioner Mason, I'm not Commissioner Mason, Commissioner Edwards stated that he has money to assist with his one point five million to create his park. To reiterate, I don't understand why certain people are giving me so much power up here, but thank God, to God be the glory, but, District Three does not have anything at all. In order to build Denny Dives, you had to pay for the land, you had to acquire the land, that's what, over what, twenty acres of land? The county had to pay for that, so I don't know if it came out of a splash, a dosh, or whatever it may be, it came from somewhere. So in order to acquire, I'm pretty sure on that splash, it was about ten point something million dollars, I would love to see that acquiring, I would love to see that document. In order to purchase that land, there had to be funding that came from to create that park. Why is the emphasis so much on District Three? I have no idea. If there's something I did to you, Commissioner Mason, I apologize publicly, I have no idea why you keep coming for me. But anyway, District Three has nothing. So you wanna keep putting citizens that has in a, uh, youth that's in a school that's already pop- overpopulated, that has no quality of life, I don't know why you don't want them to have it. I have no idea, but that's you and God. But I, I just want to reiterate that they do not have anything. So when you built these other parks, you had to put the funding in it to acquire the land, all of it was not county property. So you had to pay for it, in order to build everything that's on it. So that's all we're trying to do, is make a, turn a wrong into a right, given a community that has nothing, no splash pad, no park, n- not even a football field, a, a playground, nothing, to be able to access. So to be able to have that, we need to be able to provide for this community, and it has to go in a splash to be able to do it.
I've asked, um, I'm sorry, I asked the county attorney to kinda help us, um, we still gonna have to make a decision where we wanna pull this, um, and there's a recommendation that we pull it from, um, the West Side Park, the West Side Park, Community Park. But I asked the, uh, county attorney to give us, uh, some kinda recommendations on what we can get, um, as far as bonding, how can we get just, um, some extra dollars there?
Yeah, so, uh, you know, my, my understanding is that the board's general preference would be to start with the committee recommendation column, and, and complete those projects, and if possible, discuss what could be added. If, if the board is going to go with the eighty-twenty split, we're going to have to cut out of that five million. I think it was two point one is what we came up with a minute ago.
Two point four.
Two point four, is that, and, and then we had the five hundred thousand from-
Correct.
HVAC, so that puts us at, at two point nine million there, we need to cut out two point one. I thought I heard, Brittany, um, did you say that if the county paid the, the debt service out of a bond, you would save three million on the, on the debt service?
The, there was, there's two types of bonds that I was speaking on earlier, there's a SPOS GO bond, which would be to bond the SPOS projects on the referendum. The three million on that is to pay the interest on that bond, that leaves seven million dollars that could be utilized for other debt, if, if the board so wishes to.
Um, so does that free up any money for additional projects? That's, that's what I was confused about.
Um, the two scenarios I gave earlier were ten million dollars and fifteen million dollars. So yes, there could be potentially, um, some money for a ten million dollar bond or fifteen million, it just depends on, um, how long the board wishes to utilize the SPOS to fund this debt.
I'm still not sure I understand, and I, I, I'm sorry, it's my, my fault here. So, on the debt service, we've got amount requested, ten million, is that what you were talking about with the SPOS bond?
The ten million incorporates both, so the three million of it would be SPOS bond, and then the additional seven million would be additional bonds.
Understood, so what, what you're saying is, when, if the county issues the, the GO bond, uh, the SPOS GO bonds to fund those projects, three million of that is going to be debt that has to be paid back just for the SPOS, and then there's seven million that is going towards pre-existing debt? Okay, and so it's possible to, um, I, I suppose, free up three million by not doing the SPOS bond, period? Or free up seven million by not repaying the existing debt? It's possible to get ten, but those would be two sacrifices the, the board would have to make.
Go ahead.
Okay. And, and so, board, for, for your information, that, that tells you there, there's some additional money, um, that, that could be had there, I, I think the seven million would be easier, if you're willing to live with that debt. Now, Brittany, is that debt that they, the county can continue to absorb?
There, the first option I gave of the ten million, the SPOS could cover around four mil, or four years of that debt, it's a six-year debt. So the county would need to look at funding that debt four years into that, um, so, and that would have to come probably from the general fund.
And, how much are the annual, uh, payments on that?
Annual payment is around one point eight million.
Okay, so that's the trade-off, you could free up the seven million, um, but it sounds like one point eight million per year would be the cost to pay out of general fund down the line. So if you, if you were to start with the committee recommendation column, second from the right, the, the projects that are already listed, that, that puts you at, uh, eighty-one, you can actually call that eighty-one, or I'm sorry, eighty thousand, seven hundred and fifty. And you can go up to, eighty-six, so that gives you five million dollars to use without making any changes to the, the county's plans for debts, uh, that, that, I'm sorry, no, it wasn't five million, it was two point nine. In the farthest right column, you have five million dollars already identified there. Uh, so at a minimum, you need to cut out two of those projects from that list, uh, just to break even to where you are. And if you want to then come up with an additional ten million dollars for another park, uh, other projects would have to be cut there.
Wow. Unless they pull money from the, um, they will have to pull money from the existing list to make it work, that's correct. Okay, yeah, so, um, I got Commissioner Henderson, then Commissioner Edwards.
Uh, thank you, Ms. C. You know, I think this is where we chime in to the, uh, county manager, and Miss Britten, Miss Brittany. How can we get the, all these, these projects, this list that we have here? This list, plus, I think to edit, uh, I think ten million for Cousins and the, um, uh, additional, one million for Nelson Heights. How can we fund those, all of these projects? 'Cause I think all of them is, is very important to the citizens of Newton County. How can we fund them? And, and I think you, you gave us an idea, but I just want mine, if it can be, to be spelled out. So, uh, I yield to the, uh, county manager.
Thank you, Commissioner Henderson. So only, only way we were able to do it is to, uh, address the SPOS committee, uh, funding, or actually reduce or eliminate some of the projects that they have listed. A finance director did give us some options as far as, um, bonding to increase, uh, a funding option. That would be the will of the commission, if you all want to do, she suggested, uh, ten million or fifteen million. Uh, again, that would, uh, require a obligation from the general fund going forward, so that's something you all would need to think of. Uh, but I think the, the SPOS committee recommendation, I think it takes a holistic approach, I, I stand with that, uh, uh, recommendation that they provide. I, I understand with, with Cousins, there's a need to address an existing facility. Uh, I think if, if it's the will of the commission, uh, that we, uh, if we have to adjust some of the listing, that, that would be fine, but you know, maybe not the ten million for Cousins, maybe eight million, and, and then look at, uh, the one million for, um, Commissioner Edwards' project. And then use fund, uh, maybe use bond funding to get those projects.
Well, we, and I guess-
But I, I need to emphasize, if you only focusing on Cousins, then the other projects that we had listed here, they would go away, they would not receive any funding.
Just, if, if I may, the question that I asked, and maybe I, maybe I wasn't clear, maybe I didn't see it right, is that I wanted you, and Miss Brittany, to figure out a way to do it. But since we, we're going back to the SPOS committee, why can't, see we got, uh, I think about with thirty and forty million dollars of, of fund balance, excess cash, emergency cash, why can't we set aside five million dollars to assist with this project? And we still would have over the ten percent, I think, we're over the ten percent that required by law in order to operate the county. Why can't we move some money that way in order to achieve this objective for these projects, if it's approved by the citizens of Newton County? I mean, I, and so I just, I'm, I'm, I'm kinda, kinda figuring out why we can't work it, if we can that way, is the law against that? Is the law against that using?
No, I do know the benefit of us maintaining our financial stability with fund balance as far as our county. So that is important.
Yeah, and I understand that. And I understand how important it is. But I also think that these projects, if they're approved by the city cousin, it's equally as important than building a big old cash pile of cash that we can't use it to improve the lives of citizens and possibly even save a life. And so I just, I often understand.
Thank you. Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to withdraw my 1.5 million dollar ask. I'll go find some, I'll go find private money to go with the state money I have, under the condition that we do not deplete any further the far-right column of the IGA money, especially as it relates to the CID and the trails. So I withdraw my 1.5 ask. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I was going to ask if, and I don't know what the amount was, but I was trying to go in and research. But it looks like, since Denny Dobbs is a matter of discussion, it looks like it costs 2 million dollars to build Denny Dobbs Park. If we can go and find out if that's accurate or not, if that is accurate, if it did cost 2 million dollars to build a Denny Dobbs Park, let's take 2 million dollars and let's build a park in District Three. If that's what we, if that's the big concern about having that in District Three, let's make that happen. If that is the cost, if that is the ask, and then if there's additional funding that we can take from this and spread it for other projects, let's make that happen, if we can do that. And I don't know if that is the actual cost. So if we can do some research to figure out what that cost is so that we can actually make that happen, so that we can fulfill as many of these projects as we possibly can, which is the objective that we're trying to get to, to see on this committee recommendation list. Where can we pull funds from to make some of these other projects happen?
So guys, we've been here now, going on two hours. Go ahead.
Our project manager, I've been working with him, we've been going backwards and forth. So we might have a solution that might be good for the board. If you, go ahead, Jeff. So using the 80-20 split, that means we're starting with 86,400,000 dollars. The committee recommendation, if we take the 500,000 dollars for the chiller out, is you're committing 80,751,272 dollars of that 86-4. So that leaves you with 5,648,728 dollars to allocate. Now, using either of the two options, that with, using the bond, you can add 10 million to that number and go 15, that you can then allocate to your projects, or you could add 15. I'm just saying those were the two options if you went the bond route. So what you've got is, using the 80% split, in keeping the recommendation for the committee, if you want to start, that is the starting point, then you can have, you can start by adding 5.6 and splitting that up among your projects and then deciding where not you want to do, add any bond funds to make up, to try to make up some of the other recommendations that are coming forward. I mean, it's just something to consider.
So Brittany, I'm not sure, I didn't hear exactly how much that note would be. I think you said 1 point, was it 1.8 million or something like that?
Per year, annually.
Per year. What would that do to our general fund? Can we take on a note like that?
Like I said, this is a six-year bond, so it would be, if you did a 10 million bond, the SPOLOX would cover around 4 million of it, or four years of it. So we would be looking at having to pick this up probably sometime around 2028, 2029. So, you know, that's several years down the road. But it would, it would add to your general fund unless you pick that up in the next SPOLOX.
Wow. I'm, Commissioner Sanders, did I miss you?
Yeah, I have a question for Jeff. Musical chairs. Can you explain what the SPOLOX committee came up in? I know the original amount was 8,000 and you came up with 10.26,000 to build it out. Can you explain the details so this can be put to rest? Because it's tiresome.
8 million?
The original was 8 million, but I know he increased it to 10.2. Because I think there were some fees or something that you had.
So we, all right, so basically what we talked about doing was the 8 million dollars was focused around buying the property and building just the, some phase one park elements, but with no building. We were going to partner with Senior Services and Senior Services was going to consider putting their requested funds co-located. That was one option.
That's a satellite service that we need for Senior Services to combine with District Three and that park. Okay.
The request, yeah, the request that Miss Free to put in for that. The 10.277 was to add 2 million dollars to that to be able to build a phase one building of some sort. And we would then determine what that building was going to be, the purpose behind it. But it would be a community center of sorts, is what we talked about. So it was to build a small park and rec or community-type center building in addition to the other things that we had already listed in the 8 million dollars.
Thank you so much for reiterating that. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
It was not just a park, it's combining with our seniors, community, and everybody combined. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Guys, we've been tasked with, my apologies, sir, we're, it's not really open for public comment, so I apologize to you for that. But tonight, there have been recommendations made tonight. And I have Mr. Walker taking notes. And the task is going to be to the county manager and finance director and myself to come back with something to present to this board. We have to have this done by July 19th. We heard, we heard of the, and we took the notes. We had, everybody agreed that we want to move forward with our real cousins. Commissioner Edwards withdrew his park. He wanted to make sure that we keep the CID and trails. So we're tasked to find out where that money could come from. I'm going to call another special call meeting before, I know y'all are tired of the meeting, but we got to do it. We got to get this done. I'm going to call another special call meeting to come back to present these findings to you guys. And you have opportunity then to, I guess we can, it'd be before July 19th, correct?
If you could do one week from now, that would give us, I think about a week to get the actual contracts drafted. There's a lot of work that we need to do. So if you come back and meet again, just know that that meeting needs to end with a resolution.
Yep, got it. All right, you have anything before we?
One thing I wanted to add is that I think, did we get some clarity on the excess funds? Are we going to remain, keep the same funding level as 2017 for excess funding for the cities?
Well, I think we did the 80-20. I think the board all agreed to 80-20. Yeah, so.
But anything over the 108 is what I'm stating. Oh, 80-20 throughout, okay.
Yeah, so I think that'd be the same exact way that we did it, the previous SPOLOX. Yep. The county will receive overages and the city will receive their overages.
Okay.
In most jurisdictions, the percentage you have doesn't change once you hit your estimate.
Okay.
This was unique. So my understanding is, and what I'm going to take back to the cities, is 80-20 throughout the entire SPOLOX.
I'm good with that. Thank you.
Guys, I greatly appreciate all of you for being here tonight. Thank you so much. Thank you so much, board members. I seek a motion that will adjourn now. It's been motion by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Edwards, all in favor. We stand adjourned. Thank you so much.